I'm going to count 1, 2, 3. On the count of 3, you will be on this planet. 1. I'm going to count 1, 2, 3. On the count of 3, you will be on this planet. 1. You are flying to this planet. 2. Now you are... You can see her very close. And 3. Far on the planet. What do you see?
Beautiful lights.
Beautiful what?
Lights.
Lights. Are you on the ground?
Yeah, it's a... It's a floor. Path.
Path. What this path is leads you to?
Straight ahead.
Very nice. And do you feel you have a body?
No, I have... A soul. An energy. I travel... Through my soul.
So, can you see yourself? Like, this energy has any type of form or shape and color?
It's white.
Okay. And it's a...
Saw somebody.
What?
I saw someone... Another light. Before. That has same light as me.
Can you say one more time? I did not get it.
The light. I saw someone with a light, the same as me. It's white. Their eyes is like...
You can see eyes?
So... Small eyes. Small. But it had like, deep green color.
I see. So you can see your own eyes?
Someone's reflection. I thought it was someone else, but it's mine.
And besides eyes, what else you can see?
Body glow.
What? You are lies. 2. Now you are very close. And 3. Far on the planet.
Beautiful lights.
Beautiful what?
Lights.
Lights. Are you on the ground?
Yeah, it's a... It's a floor. Path.
Path. What this path is leads you to?
Straight ahead.
And do you feel you have body?
No, I have soul, an energy. I travel through my soul.
So, can you see yourself? Like, this energy has any type of form or shape and color?
It's white.
And it's a...
Saw somebody.
What?
I saw someone... Another light. Before. That has same light as me.
Can you say one more time? I did not.
The light. I saw someone with a light, the same as me. It's white. Their eyes is like...
You can see eyes?
So... Small eyes. Small. But it had like, deep green color.
So you can see your own eyes?
Someone's reflection. I thought it was someone else, but it's mine.
And besides eyes, what else?
Body glow.
What?
The body glows by light.
You can...
Feels like the spirit of energy.
Okay. So right now, you're floating or flying?
Right now, floating.
Let's see. Where are you floating?
Trying to find. I'm trying to find this place. It's hard to go.
So, when you are floating, what do you can see on this planet?
Some mixture of light. And colored light.
Do you see anything? Like, besides the lights? Do you see any plants? Anything else on... You know, it can always be under the same path. What is the plants?
It's all universe. So lights. Cosmic lights. I don't see. Nothing else around it. Just lights.
You don't see anything else but lights? So where are you floating?
Trying to find path. Again. There's some reason. Having a hard time looking for this path. It's all connected. I mean, I don't know why I'm back in the years. I have no idea.
So do you feel this planet is your home?
Ah, I keep connected.
Where are you now?
My space.
I'm asking you, how does this energy make you feel?
Good.
Tell me more.
Just some colors now.
I want you to tell me the feeling.
I feel... I feel so... Hurt.
So much.
It hurts higher. I...
Tell me the feeling.
Feel hurt.
Hurt?
Yes.
Why? The energy can't hurt you.
Just run away. See dark. I...
Keep on...
Feel about... Sad.
Deep feeling. Feeling this way. And what's in the darkness?
Saw... Lot of souls.
Souls?
Yes. Trying to find... Lights.
What made you understand that they are souls?
I saw the beginning. They were... Trying to find... Lights. So we're trying to find it. Saw the soul, they're still... Roaming around. Unable to find... The essence of the light.
So they're trying to find the light, but they cannot?
Yes.
What... What are you? Are you one of those souls? Or you're different?
I... I don't know if I'm one of them. But I see those souls. They... Makes me feel sad. Can't help them. They didn't... Trying to...
Let me ask you. So those souls, what happened to them? Use your knowledge.
Seems like the planet will destroy.
So they have no place to go?
They have no place to go. Seems like... Planet will destroy.
By what?
Something force, something evil. Caught them by surprise. So there's soul is around. The essence of that planet that doesn't exist.
So, how many souls is?
Allah. Trying to find... The light.
Right. What do you think you can do for them?
Because they die. I need to... Help them. I need to... Let them away into the light.
So you can show them the direction?
Yeah. They... They need to follow me.
So let me ask this question. So why you are here? You came here to... Need them? You know?
Yeah.
You know that they need you?
Yeah.
Alright, so now you know that you have a reason to be here. So where you can take them to?
I need to say it to them, the light. These souls are lost. Because they can't see... The beautiful place. Where they need to go.
There. So now, what do you do next?
I have to... I have to talk to the universe.
Alright, do that. Go to that moment that you're talking to the universe.
To the universe. Let these people need help. Something has to shine. The light has to shine on them. Because they are lost souls.
So, after you told the universe, what is the... The universe says? What is... This universe wants?
Shine of light. Lot of hope.
So you shine the light?
The universe shining light on them.
Yeah. And you can take them to the light?
Yeah. I just need... To bring them there. It's my... It's my love.
So are you leading them now?
Yeah.
They're following you?
Yeah.
So now, I want you to listen to my words. I'm gonna count 1, 2, 3. On the count of 3, you're going to that place. They want those souls to be there. 1. Going to that destination. 2. Getting closer, closer. And 3. Where are you?
Ah.
Where are you?
I transcend to another part of the universe. They...
You transcend it?
Yes.
To call it to your delight?
Crossed over.
Then those souls are following you?
Oh, they left with the light.
Is this what you want?
Yeah, I told them to follow the light. They follow the light, and then I crossed over.
Beautiful. So now you're alone?
Yeah.
What do you... What do you feel right now?
I feel relieved. I feel happy. Being found. What you're looking for.
So... But you did, you did it. So what you... What you do next?
Ah. I gotta move on.
Is this your mission? To help lost souls find lights?
Yes. It's... Beacon of hope.
Be- beacon?
Yes.
Of hope?
Yes.
That is you?
That's what I...
You call yourself beacon of hope?
Yes.
So who else you thinking needs your help?
The world.
Do you do this all the time?
Yeah.
What is your next assignment?
Save the humanity.
What?
Save the humanity.
Uh-huh, you're talking about Earth?
Yes.
So, where are you now?
Watching... Sun and earth.
What do you see?
Lost.
When you look at earth, what kind of emotions?
Sad emotions.
What makes you feel sad? And let those emotion come out?
People. Cry.
They cry? Let me see.
Souls. She needs help.
They need a different help?
Yes.
They have the planet. But they're not have...
Yes. They... Don't know.
They don't know?
I don't know. They... They are the lost souls too. Because... They don't know... This.
They don't know what they're doing?
Uh-huh.
Tell me more about why you feel sad looking at them.
The souls... Are not... Know... What they experiencing. They just don't know themselves. Because... The souls... Are not... Who they are.
They are not aware of who they are.
Yes. We have to save them. We have to show them.
Show them.
We have to make them aware of who they are. Who they really are. Because they're not who they are.
They're acting as who they're not.
Right.
What you thinking you can do?
Have to show them the same way. Have to show them...
The light.
The light. I can only help them so much. But I need to help them to find their way, just like I do. Just like I help the other ones.
And this time, is this harder than the other... Souls?
Yes, the other souls. Which just destroy. Souls, they're gonna be destroyed the same way. If they don't awaken to find the light that they need. To find.
Because if they don't find out who they are, you can also destroy the planet?
Yes. Yes. This planet... Has potential, but the people are not shining the love that they need to do. To save the planet. Shining the light. They're not witness they set of mind. Or their conscious. They need to be aware that we are one planet of love. But they don't see it that way.
Why they don't see?
Because they're so focused on different things. And not what they need to, why they came here. They came here for a reason.
They can have purpose.
Yes. They came here to save this planet. Some people don't understand that. Some people, they are just living their daily lives. Not realizing there's so much they could do. If this world could be as peaceful as the other world out there.
Let me ask you. Do you see something that is preventing them from seeing truth?
Yes.
What is that?
Bad people. People, they're so evil around this planet.
Who are they? Are they from somewhere else?
Yes. They control the energy of this planet. They wanna control the way this planet is now.
Why they want... What's their, what's their goal?
Goal is to destroy this planet. Just like they did million years ago. In another planet. And I see probably the connection of those souls in those planets. They were destroyed by the same people. They're trying to destroy this planet.
And so after they, let's say, accomplish that, what they will do?
They're just gonna... Move on to the next planet.
Why they want to conquer another planet?
It's that's their mission. To destroy these planets. But they need to save the... The people... Here.
What you can do to make people understand who they are?
They need to find. They need to wake. They need to see... The potential of themselves. And that's so much what they think it is, the potential. This planet... Earth is the only planet... That has so much...
To offer.
To offer. So much to see. All the planets will see this planet for what they are. What we are. But they can relate to us. Because they're so different than ours. This planet needs to be the same way that they are because... They are different. They're looking up for us. They're looking for us.
To what?
They wanna be changed. They wanna feel that we could change, but we need to... Be ourselves. Find of same way ourselves.
What you... What you see yourself doing? While you are actually helping someone? What is that that you can do to make people become aware of who they are?
I need to show them the way. I need to show them the way.
What you do to be able to do something?
I have to... Find more people like me. The more people I find like me, the better I like. I need to connect to other people like me.
As a group?
Yeah. It's meet. Discuss. How can we change the people here? It's not so much the people, it's just the environment. People are love. See? The love. The light. There's others like me here. On this planet. Connected. Doing their best to connect. Doing their best to heal them. Heal them one by one, but it's so hard to do.
So does this Miguel has, carries a, let's say, healing ability?
I know. I need to show them how to heal.
What way Miguel will be able to heal people?
Show them... The light. Consciousness.
By talking to them?
Talking to them. Reflecting the love. How to change themselves. Not many people love themselves. They can't find... That in them.
So they can find love inside of them?
Yes, they need to find love. They need to see themselves... From the inside out.
For them to be able to shine?
Yes. They need to shine themselves. We need to help them.
So when they shine, then they can help others?
Yes.
So it becomes like a report of impact?
Yes. It's... The other way to do that. To everyone. Everyone needs to see... Transcend to this love. To this light of love. It's beautiful. They don't know it. But it's so beautiful, so peaceful. They could only connect to this light of love.
So let me ask. Um, we have a certain social system, economic system. And let's say people, most people work night to 5:00 for some corporations. So what do you think that you can do to make them understand? Is this something, one, we are kind of restricted? Because we have to do those work. And people don't have time to focus on anything else. What do you say about this? Because they're busy making... Because they're busy making living?
Only some people are like that, there are others that have awakened, that they have the same energy. Those people, you have to help them to understand. Sometimes, the most insignificant thing can make a difference in this world. It's all about how you see them and they see you. Sometimes it's about the energy that we give them, we don't realize that we have it, that they have it too. They shine too, they could shine, they could change. It's many, there's so many people out there.
There already are wicked?
A lot of them, a lot of people are changing.
In what way?
For good.
So what they do differently?
What they do differently is they raising their self-consciousness, awareness. They see who they are, they see that they are a soul of light. They raising their frequency. They experiencing what others experiencing. That's the reason why. But there are so many that needs help, it's hard to really cure them. When I say cure, because some of them will not make it. Some of them will not make it.
Will not make it?
Will not. That's why it hurts me, it's so sad.
You say, cannot make it at this time, but can make it the next, next time, next life?
Next life, yes, now.
But they will not be happy here, under here?
No.
So awakening, awakening basically, that we say?
Yes.
But why we're so tied up by this financial part to be able to survive here?
It's the system this father created.
Who created?
It's people here on this planet, created a system to control the people. They wanna control everyone, I have in this system, they need to rely on the system.
People are born to this system?
Yes, we don't have that. In another planet, here it was made for a reason, to control, to control the people. Let them see what they want to see, what they want to have. So many people are controlled by this system, but that's gonna die. The system is gonna change.
Because this system is not sustainable?
No, it's not, and this system is gonna change eventually to a different system. People are not gonna rely on this old system of control, population.
What do you say about our education system?
That's gonna die too.
People will learn different things?
Yes, people will learn different, people will open up their conscious more. The whole idea of these people, the bad people, is to not give anyone what they need or deserved. This is the free will of what we are. The system was created to control all of us, control the masses. And it's dividing us, dividing us, everyone. Every country in this world has been divided.
And what do you say about money?
Same thing. It's how the greed controls. All these people are controlled by greed, but that's gonna change. That's gonna change soon.
So what we can do at this point?
Educate the ones that they are blind to see what's going on. They're not seeing this whole world the way it should be. These people are products of their, all manifestation of how they be in control. They're not who they are.
And but they don't know?
But they don't know. Everything is changing, everything, year by year.
To a better, to a better direction?
No, there's two things going on. Oneness, the oneness of love of us, this planet. But then you have those that wanna control how we are. They want to control us by this artificial intelligence. They want to create another us. We can't let them take over, we gotta stop them. We cannot rely on that, the system where they want humanity to be controlled. That's the AI of this artificial intelligence.
So, so let's say the smartphone, people were very into that, like we just do everything from the phone and people look at the phone all day. Is this what those energy wants us to focus on?
Yes.
So we will not pay attention to anything else?
Yes, there is a form of energy they try to take away from you guys. Because they know, we don't have, they control us, we can't let them. We will.
The technology looks like it's something that we can use to make our life easier, but on the other hand, is controlling us.
Yes, we lost the sense, we lost the sense of time in this world through technology. The love we have for another, it's all taking place in a different manner. They don't realize that.
So when we are using the technology, we have less time to really talk to people in person?
Yes, we're supposed to be talking to us, our souls are supposed to communicate with us, not technology. We lost the souls of communication, the time of us communicating because technology has taken over that. That's what they wanted from the beginning. There's more developing in this.
It seems that we're going to have more and more technology and that will make people lose more connections with each other?
Yes.
By less weight of our consciousness?
Yes, we have to raise our consciousness, our love for human kind.
So we cannot depend, depend on other people's, other beings' help, we have to change?
We have to change, we want for them to come to us. We have to give them a gateway so them, so they can see us much closer to us. We're supposed to be connected with them. That's gonna happen soon, we will connect with them. They're gonna help us.
What you can see about future?
It's war?
War?
Yes. I see war before we can find the peace and love in this planet.
I don't want to have a war.
Yes, something is about to happen.
Is this war to conjure, conjure?
It's a war, but more than that. Some of the country is a country, but it's another war. Happen. There's a war of technology, yes. That's gonna take over. That's what they take, what they want to take, they are conscious, human kind. We have to stop them, we can't let them, we will, we will change that.
What else we can do to raise our consciousnesses?
Talk to people, talk to different people, for they're all so innocent in this world, they're not aware of it, it's gonna happen, they're so innocent.
So what is supposed to come to this planet, forget about everything of who we are, and then use this life, this physical experience to slowly remember who we are? But some people cannot remember that.
Yes, because people are not aware of it. There's a job to make them aware of what's going on. When they do, they'll have the energy that they get from the universe, until then, they're not gonna have it.
So you are saying that when we become awakened, we can, then we can receive energy from the universe? So what kind of energy that universe is sent?
That our entire bodies.
To support us, to be more awakened?
Yes, and more, we aren't meant to have.
Are you saying the more we become awakened, the more energy we receive?
Yes, there's a reason behind that.
So that this energy will make us feel joy and peace and be able to do more?
Yes, our body will heal.
So we don't need any drugs to heal ourselves?
No, our body will heal through this form of energy that we get from the universe. We are being guided and assisted by others, but it has to be done collectively, we need to join together.
What you say about, let's say, the food that right now people are putting into their body?
No, some people destroying their body eating these foods that they're not life for them.
And is that, this is also one of the reasons people can, can not come awake?
Yes.
Because of the chemicals?
Yes, they are trying to poison our food and our, and our water.
And then the air?
The air is being polluted every time by these chemicals being released to try to control the weather, control how we breathe, the air, it's not as, quite as clean as it used to be. They try to blame it on other stuff.
And also the weather, let's say, the global warming?
Yes, that's the reason why, they try to blame it on other stuff, so people believe in that, but it's controlled by these people, evil, evil people, other peoples on this planet.
So where are they from?
Different planets, for different reasons.
So let's say if we have free will, why they can interfere our life often and our environment fights?
Because this.
Because we allow them?
Yes, because we are not supposed to change this world, but we're not. We're allowing these people to destroy our planet, we've given them that right to destroy, we have to change that. We have to change this planet, this planet doesn't destroy itself, the people destroy the planet.
So everything goes to the same direction is the way that we can do better and help ourselves is to raise consciousness?
Yes.
What is the reason that Miguel contacted me this after the session?
He needs to understand, he's trying to find himself connecting to this planet as much as we all are.
So it's time for him to know what his mission is?
Yes.
So is this also time for him to release the protection that he has built a shield?
Yes, he's too afraid, he's too afraid of saying things, he needs to open his heart, his mind, to connect one another, to join together. He senses separate, shield himself from the connection.
He doesn't need to have any fears?
I don't know, but he's afraid, he has the power, he has the ability to change himself.
And he's ready?
He's sure, he's sure.
And after the session, he will know who he truly is, he's much more than who he thinks he is?
Yes.
And he changed his job and this new job, he feels much more peaceful and that happens for a reason?
Yes.
For him to be able to become more awakened?
Yes.
And he will have the energy to help others?
Yes.
So now the question is, what happened about his son? Is this, his son is there for him to be able to do, to learn something from him or from each other? What his condition is teaching Miguel? This muscular dystrophy, what is the purpose?
His son is, is his hope, is his light. Something happened, something happened when his son was born, there was some disconnection within, that's the reason why his son is the way he is. There was some disconnection, some matter form, and his son didn't develop the way it should have been.
Is this an accident or is it was planned this way?
It was planned, not an accident.
What is Miguel supposed to learn?
Be strong, heal the world he came to.
What is his son's purpose?
His son's purpose to be here is to do also the same thing.
To heal and help?
Yes.
So but if someone is in that type of physical condition, what if he really can to help?
He needs to be awakened, he needs to be awakened as well.
So he will become awakened or he needs some sort of help?
He needs help, he needs to be awakened, he has the ability to heal himself, but he needs to be. He has the ability to heal himself, but he needs to be awakened.
So do you think, would you say, let's say if his son does this type of hypnosis session, he will be able to find out who he is?
Yes. He needs to understand more of this universe. He needs to understand himself. He can heal.
Others?
Yes.
Which is going to help him to heal himself?
Yes.
So helping others is the best way to heal himself?
Yes.
What is, besides hypnosis session, the best way, the efficient way for someone to become awakened?
He needs to understand. He needs to understand. It's happened for a reason, because he needs to believe. He needs to believe in himself. If he doesn't believe in himself, he'll never be able to heal because he needs to believe in himself in order for him to help others. He is not awakened. His father is the one who's keeping him alive. His father holds the energy that he needs. That's the reason why he's still around.
Otherwise, he wouldn't be here?
Yes.
Because if someone is not serving their purpose, then they, let's say in a way that they can be taken back?
Yes.
Because there is no point to be here. So serving our purpose is a must for the soul?
Yes.
It's not an option?
No.
But let's say, I always want to ask, with some people, they are, they're just spending their entire life as a normal human being and doing the daily life. So why this type of way of living is also allowed?
We allow it to happen. We allow ourselves in this situation. We are living because our soul is our energy. We can change if we want to. Some people don't realize that.
So when the soul does not serve the purpose in one life, and they will finish what they did not finish in another life?
Soul will go back. The soul will come back. If you have a purpose, finish, permission, God, fine. If not, we will go to another planet. It started over again.
Another planet can be Planet Earth?
Some people can come back. Others don't come back again.
Because they can go to somewhere else?
No. The universe will hold them until they're ready again to come back.
They don't have to come back right away?
Yes, that is correct.
So what is, can we say, one of the purpose for everyone who came to Earth is to help each other and help Earth?
Yes. We are people on this planet to help this planet. This planet has a lot of things that other planets don't have. There are a multitude of living creatures here, other planets they don't have. We have other dimensions in this planet that no one knows. They don't live here. On the planet itself, they actually live in the water. They cannot stay above the water. Their souls living in there. There's a whole universe. No one knows, but they are there.
So in a way, Planet Earth is very excited for a soul to have this experience?
Yes.
Because you can do so much here?
Yes. There's other species here. We have so many of them, this planet.
So what is, how many times, how many lives Miguel had on Earth?
Hundred and three.
And how many lives he had on Earth?
Ten.
Do you see a number?
I see ten, ten.
Ten?
Ten. So many numbers.
So many zeros?
Yes.
Let's say, see how many zeros there is?
Five.
Five zeros? Ten thousand? No, hundred thousand, yeah? Something like that?
Yeah.
Hundred thousand? So he's a very old soul?
Yes.
So let's say evolution, and because a soul like Miguel's soul has been experiencing, let's say, hundred thousand lives. So the evolution of the soul is, this is the nature of the soul?
Yes, we are.
And if this evolution has no end?
No.
So the soul can keep learning and growing?
Yes.
So let's say, there's no end of the universe?
No.
The universe can keep expanding?
Yes.
Is Miguel's soul, is one of those glactic, how to say, is one of the starses?
Yes.
Which starses have glad he has been?
Starses.
Let's say Gladiators or Aquarius? What kind of role he's playing in a glactic federation?
He is a warrior.
Warrior? Tell me what he has done?
He intercepts our planets.
You say one?
Intercepts planets that need help. He's giving access to help the planet that need to grow.
How does he do this?
Shine. He needs to start. He has to fight evil.
So those evils, can we say they are also serving their purpose?
Yes.
To create duality, contrast?
Yes.
So they are in a way that those energies are necessary for the evolution?
Yes. As a warrior, he's a healer. He has the power to heal.
How does he heal?
Self-conscious. Through the conscious of everyone. He fights the evil with his energy.
Can you just describe to us something that we could understand, how he fights?
There's million. There's energy all over this planet. Evil energy. He helps controlling those energies. Pushing them out. He has the greatest power. That's why he sent it here to push the negative energy out.
So what does he do that can push them out?
Every energy that takes over a soul, he helps them. He helps them. Give the bit of bad energy that's taking possession of their soul.
What we can do, let's say, besides fighting with the energy, push them out? Is there any way that we can make peace with them?
You have to get rid of it. It doesn't belong here. It will always come back. We are the one that keeping peace of this planet by keeping the bad energy away. Having this planet raise their energy to a loving energy. This is... This is how we are.
So if Miguel is part of the collective federation, so what is, let's say, what he is doing, what he's dreaming?
He's healing. He's healing the world.
How he, how does he do that?
He connects with other people.
Interact?
Yes.
What he's dreaming?
Yes.
So why those memories, those part of the dreams, since that he will not be able to remember?
Most of the time, he doesn't remember dreams because he cannot see them as he travels. He needs to gain back his consciousness without any recollection of his memories. As he travels, he goes to different places.
You're talking about he travels while he is sleeping?
Yes.
Where he travels to?
Other souls, other planets.
So what, what does he do? I know he's doing the healings.
There's a planet that he has so much energy that he gave strong.
Or he gets energy from those planets?
Through the source of light. He comes back to Earth to bring energy to this.
So he gets energy from there and bring the energy back to Earth?
Yes.
So why, again, why those memories will not be able for him to memorize?
He's afraid. His conscious is afraid to have seen what's the other side. About to show him.
Why is that way?
He doesn't understand.
The conscious mind will not understand this?
No.
But what is the purpose of our conscious mind?
Conscious mind is just visualization of this living things around us.
Physical world?
Physical world, what we see. That's what we engage to.
But why we're so caught up in the mind?
It's what we live for in this world. We don't use spirituality in this world. We use our conscious mind instead of the spirituality that we are in.
And that's why we're not happy?
Yes. We don't have the emotions, the energy of love. We see things from a different perspective.
Right now?
Yes.
What we can do to use more of our subconscious mind?
Yes. We can use that through healing ourselves through separating ourselves from the physical world into the spiritual world.
So?
Connect through the light. We could see through the soul of the mind, subconscious. We can have those plants help us building game for subconscious. Humans they don't know how to control that they need help finding themselves.
So we can use planets for us to be able to become our subconscious, to see the world from a different perspective?
Yes.
Is Miguel has any connections with Archimonde?
That's his source. That's his source. That's his light.
His light?
That's the guardian angel that protects him.
He also has guides, spirit guides?
Yes.
Does he know who they are?
Yes.
How many he has?
A lot.
A lot like that? Twenty, thirty, fifty?
Yes.
Why he needs that many fights?
He has his, all his ancestors with him. Because they guide him where he needs to go. He has source with his protectors. He he don't see them, but they are with him. He feels them.
Let's see, this question that he had a dream about Lady Gaga, what is this about?
This Lady Gaga, it was his imagination, another dream. He was giving a warning that he was gonna come and see person today. He saw Lady Gaga. He said Lady Gaga was dressed in black today. That was his whole imagination on the dream.
Is there any meaning?
Yes. It was you.
Oh. And I'm dressing black?
Yes. You're supposed to connect with him.
With him, with Miguel?
Yes.
Tell me more about this. What we can do to?
Spiritual world is a connection that will develop through time.
Let's say, my soul and Miguel's, do we have any sort of connections before?
Yes, there's a light from the past. You're supposed to be his be his soul survivor. In another planet, in another you guys both you were soul. You met. So spiritually, somehow you connected with him in the spiritual world.
What do you see that we might be doing something together in the future?
Healing. Healing. Saving the people. His job, his mission was here to do the same. He's very spiritual, connected to the other world spirituality. When we leave our soul, we just don't leave right away. Then we go. Our soul stays here on this earth until it's time to be called by the universe. There's a lot of souls out here that needs help. He does that through prayers. He helps them bring them to the light with the source. Some of these spirits, they don't know where they're going. They stay on this earth. Some of them are very evil. Some they find a way to cause hardship to other people. The some, they just stay here, cause no one acknowledge them. He has the ability to do that. He has the ability to send them back.
So this is when, when they lost their bodies?
Yes.
Some souls will stay here?
Yes.
They're lost souls?
Yes. He sends them back to see, to the light, to the eternal light. Where they need to go, that's the source.
Tell us a little bit more about the source.
We all have our time. So our spirits, what we know, what concern to be spirits is subconscious of our body. And we stay here. And we don't find the light because we're lost. Nobody tell us where we came from, where we are.
They all came from the source?
Yes. We are lights, the energy that comes from the source. And some of these people, spirits, we call them. They don't find the light, the source where they need to go. He has encountered them. And they get close to him. They bother him, so they could send them back. He's the only one who knows how to do it.
Uh huh, so those lost souls that they can get through his body, that if they want him, not only Miguel to send them back?
Yes. They benefit from his energy.
So sometimes Miguel feels his energy all over his body, is that because of that?
Yes. He's got energy in his body. These souls that come to seek. He prays to them so they can go back. He does it through prayers and water and light.
So through water and prayers, that's the way he's on the path?
Yes.
So let's say, we call them lost souls, lost souls, ghosts. Because they're just, they're lost, they don't know where to go.
Yes.
But they know this is not the right place for them to stay.
Yes.
What do you say about this, um, just something I want to know more about sleep paralysis? What is that about?
It's when your body stays in one place in your soul. It's awake of your subconscious mind. And you feel like you wanna leave your body, but you can't. Cause the one that's awake is your subconscious. And you see the times that you're afraid of leaving the body. That you wanna hold back to prevent from leaving the body. And you see everything around you.
That's why the body came over?
Yes.
Then there's nothing to be afraid.
No. He experienced that before, but he's afraid to let go.
So because the, the subconscious wants to go to somewhere else?
The conscious doesn't let that take place.
Because?
He's afraid to let go and see everything of the universe has to offer. He's afraid.
So the conscious mind is afraid?
Yes.
I see. Because of that, that's a threat, when someone's doing healing, it's a threat to them.
Yes.
But can you call those energies, negative and dark energy? Um, they are doing that, they're stopping us from doing healing because they are, I know they want to control the earth, but we can also say they are not happy. Um, and they're, in a way, they're in pain. Why they're dark?
They're dark because they're forms of evil. They don't wanna see the way things will change in the universe, on the planets. So this dark energy is, is controlling other people as well. Because how they manifest that's how they manifest.
So is this the same energy of the one that is controlling, is creating the systems on Earth? The same energy?
Yes. This energy is a different entity. I know they want to block everything from people to control. I see this dark energy rozing around me, I don't like it.
You can see that right now?
Yeah, it's too dark. I don't, I don't like it.
What do they look like?
Very very evil. It's a dark side.
Dark side?
Dark side. I don't like it. I have to get away from that.
You have the power, you know.
It's trying to manifest.
Do they have an entity?
They have no entity.
Say what would happen?
They have no entity.
So who created them?
It's a dark force, evil takes over.
But evil, still, it was created by some, something?
Yes. It's created by some different dimension of that.
Some, what other dimensions?
Yes. I'm trying to find the light. I need to get away.
What do you think is the best way to?
I need to leave here.
Leave where?
Far away.
Are you talking about this room or?
I need to wake. So I gotta have energy.
You need to wake up?
Yeah.
Use your energy and power. And use the energy that you can gain from the universe. And each breath, you feel you have more and more, you become stronger. When they cannot do anything, you can repel them. You can do it. And so this is the energy, the dark energy, is the same one that I described to you? I, I, I know they're, they're created in a different dimension?
Yes.
Uh huh, and is there a name to describe them?
I don't even know why it's called that. It's so powerful, negative. It doesn't even have a name to describe it.
And it's a group, right? It's many beings together.
It's a source of this dark energy.
So, so Source knows this?
Yes.
So whether the Source can do this or?
This energy's traveled all over the universe. It's like goes beyond.
What they're trying to?
They just try to manifest from from other energies, they are the same. Pulls it into the same. It's not a good energy, it's just a bad energy. And it helps grow themselves. Always see always see that light, I see different.
So do they have carry very advanced technology?
Yes.
And are they, uh, something that could manage to manipulate the subconscious mind?
Yes. They know that. When I say they, they belong to Federation or something.
So what they do?
They see, they know that the energy is evil energy of the artificial intelligence of try to connect the other ones responsible.
Who are responsible?
The AI.
The AI?
Yes, it's the dark energy.
So AI sounds like something that can really help us with our life, but it's not true.
No, I just wanna, there's a manifest of evil energy out there.
So is this?
There is another entity of energy. To describe it, yeah. The ones that they manifest through this technology. Yeah, the creators.
The negative creators.
Yeah.
So the AI, uh, just now you, you talk about this dark energy which doesn't have any, that's a different energy from AI?
Feels like it resembles from it. But the, the dark energy is so from another dimension, from another
Which dimension?
Goes beyond.
The high? Which dimension?
Trying to see. It goes into this black hole and it leads into nowhere. But it finds its way back, cause it knows where to go.
So they're always moving?
Yes. Yes.
And it's, you know, how to say, it's like a clutter of energy?
Yes.
And this is kind of big and powerful?
Yes.
Do they come to Earth?
Yeah, but they will if they...
But not yet, but they can?
Yes.
Where are they?
There are way there are way in this black hole. Millions, millions of them in all this sky. They manifest from every other planet.
What, what is their goal?
Destroy.
Destroy?
Planets.
By using what?
The energy. The negative energy.
Why they want to destroy?
That's how they gain the force. That's how they gain their strength.
So?
Energy manifests through this.
Is this the type of energy that you were not aware of before?
No.
Never encountered with them yet?
No.
So what does Galactic Federation do about this?
They're working on it. They're working on to change that energy. So...
But before they have a way to catch this energy, right now they are just everywhere, it goes everywhere.
Yes.
So what is the black hole? What is the function of the black hole?
It leads to other dimensions, other connections.
Can you explain again? So it seems every one, when things are stuck into black hole, then they don't come, come out, so that goes, is a portal?
Yes.
Is this something that we're supposed to have in the universe?
No.
They are negative?
Yes.
Uh huh. And they're created by negative energy?
Yes.
And there's anything we can do with that?
All the, the universe can do something.
Can do some?
Universe is a one that can't do anything, it's so... These portals, they just open up. It's radically, if I say.
What we say the universe is this, represents source energy?
Yes. We have different universe out there, beyond beyond our universe. And more universe.
And multiverse?
Yes. There is this black hole.
In every universe?
Yes, that's how they travel.
And what, so the, the only being can, the only energy can do anything with that black hole is the universe?
It's just shifts different universe. Black hole just stay in one's area. It shifts to different universes.
So say one more time.
The black hole shifts into different universe?
Shifts?
Yes.
To different universes?
Yes. There are many, many universe out there.
So why the universe needs to be shifted?
That's how it was designed, that's how it is. It is beyond our control.
So this is not, so you said this is negative or it's not? It's just always?
Yes, negative.
It is negative?
Negative energy
Is doing this?
Is doing.
Does, does this has, have anything to do with that dark energy?
Yes.
So this dark energy does not have any?
Does. One. Independent. I see just one. It's like one of their sole nations of this. They travel as well to different planets. But they have a mission to the galaxy. I see that they have different light system.
Different what system?
A light system.
Tell me more about that.
They have some light energy, it's just shifting around with themselves. They're like translucent. I see how they are just now.
Now?
They're so translucent. So different energies of colors. They're just... Just trying to see their ship.
What ship?
Just trying to see a ship. It was translucent and and the energy is around it, it was like, the colors were so beautiful, it was like... Like white, light blue glowing colors. We cannot see, but this there's an energy feel around it. It's blocking me from seeing. They're very protective.
What do they do?
They just block. They block me. They don't want me to see what's in it.
So they know how to block other beings?
Yes. They don't wanna see how their ship looks like. They block me, they know, they, they know that.
Then you can communicate with them and say you don't have to block them forever?
See?
So do you, can you understand what they're doing?
They were going somewhere. They were going on a mission, tried to stop it, and they, and I saw their ship and they blocked me.
Can you see the ship?
I saw the ship before, it was so translucent. And it blocked me.
Oh, that's why it's translucent, because they want other to see. And they are helping other beings?
What I gather is, they were going somewhere on a mission. They didn't want to tell me where they were going. I just know that they realized that I was on to them.
Thank you, can you see, so there's a lot of beings there in the ship?
Yes. There were a lot of but they disappear on me. They didn't let me. The minute I saw their their energy on their ship as I was on to them, they realized it and they blocked me. I don't understand why. Don't know why they did that.
Maybe what they are doing is not something everyone should know. They're, uh huh, they're being secretive, hiding some?
Probably. I just can't believe they just took me out like that.
So?
I just can't believe they just blocked me in an instant when they saw that I was on to them.
Uh huh. And no communication?
No, I saw the ship and I saw like a lot of stuff in there disappear all of a sudden. I saw like multiple.
What people?
I saw different kind of people. But they didn't let me.
What, what do they look like?
They're translucent human being, I mean, a human being lights a source. Just like the ship. They didn't let me see inside.
Do you understand what their mission is?
I couldn't. I wanted to ask them what's, what's the purpose of them. What mission they were going to, but they didn't want me to know.
And ask them why they cannot tell me where, why they need to block me?
They didn't want to. Ask them why they're blocking me, they just didn't want to. Tell me, nothing.
And so you have a feeling that they are advanced?
I have a feeling they're out here. If there's something, but they don't want me to be around. See you're growing beautiful.
What do I look like?
So beautiful soul, like light, energy. Like stars comes around, you know, it's beautiful shape.
What do I do?
You're flying.
Flying?
Yes.
Why is my mission?
Your mission? Safe. Safe the planets.
What planet?
This planet and there was another planet, you I see this planet you belong to. Which is a planet made out of lights, hologramics. It's peaceful.
What do you see on planets?
It's around it different structure. It's made out to there's a light that keeps shining on me, showing me your planet.
Go ahead. Take a look.
Your structure is so different from what I could see what it showed me. You guys are source of this energy that it's beautiful, you can't describe it. It showed me the structure of your buildings, it's not really made out of different material. It was light, it was all hollow for this structure. You guys even have a pyramid that is, one of us is a hollow pyramid, it's not even...
It's holographic?
Yes.
Tell me more about this planet, and does it have a name?
Trying to see what do they call this planet? I can't see it's connect as far. Really far. So far that I even tense... Looking at it.
So when you say far, is from which point? Like... What you use as a benchmark?
I don't even know if I would say that. It's not within our galaxy. It's a different galaxy. And there are other... Planets around that. But your planet is very translucent. Your planet is... That's why they call it the planet of peace, of hope.
Player of peace and hope?
Yes, and love. Because that's what we have. It's a planet everyone wants to visit.
What is... Tell me more about it. What do you guys see on the planet? What do we do?
Source. You guys get your source of energy through the universe.
Say again, say again.
Your... Source of energy, you get it from the universe. That's how you guys... Keep... Your energy. Because the universe is the one that gives it to you. So you guys... Guys are like... Guys are like, like translucent, like jellyfish if I wanna say. I mean, it's just translucent.
If you're on this planet, okay? Or what do they, what do people do?
Not that much. They don't... They... Their reaction is very different from ours. It's so intense.
Tell me. What is the difference?
I can't even describe it. When you walk around, you see just light. Everything I see... It's just... Form of the light. Like everything is around it. If I wanna describe it, like, it's like... Feels like it's a holograph, but it's not. I don't even know what to find. There is a different... Source... To describe this planet.
Yeah, do your best to describe. It's a planet, right?
Yes.
And you can force up light source?
Yes. Everything, all the surroundings around it, it's just... See it. Structures. It's all about... Holographics in a way. Because they have no... There is no physical body over there. Everything is like... Source of... Energy.
Source energy?
Yes. You guys are... Translucent.
Do you love?
There is so much love in there. Everyone is a whole and that planet is love. There is why they love because they get it from the universe. That's what they send them.
So what's their purpose in this planet?
It's...
To feel love?
To feel love. They connect... To one another through the... Love, energy. It feels like serenity. So peaceful, so emotional. That's what I see.
Feel unconditional love?
Beautiful. So beautiful.
Can you tell me the name of this planet? See if those letters will pop up?
Trying to see... What they are. A?
Yeah.
Very different A. That's the first thing that they show me. They show me is an A. But then they would try to show me some other letters. Trying to see... What other letters are you guys?
Do you see S?
In one of the letters, it looked at... Holographically, it looks like an S, but it was like an S.
Okay.
Backwards. I don't know the way it presented to me. It was like going horizontal instead of...
Okay. What's the next one?
It's like a beacon of light. That's where I got it from. You were supposed to... Show the other galaxy, the planet of love. Beacon is the planet that lights. There is love. It's the energy.
And you feel this energy?
Yes.
And if you use dimension, how many dimensions is?
Your planet?
Yeah, this is Akonaki.
Yours? Beyond?
Whatever.
I can say somewhere around seven. That's where I see it.
So I want you to see another thing. What made me, after created this planet and decided to come to Earth?
You were chosen.
By who?
Volunteer. They... Wanted... To... Bring new souls into this planet. You were chosen because you volunteer. Your planet was created by you.
But I decided...
You decided to come here... To change this planet.
So this is my first time as human?
This is the first time you're here on this planet. You were chosen... The way I see you were chosen to come here. Because... You were given... That assignment. To help humanity. That's why your instance keeps pulling you into... Other things like you're doing. Is to help people, to help them. It could become something else, but you... It's something that tells you... You need to... Change the world. You need to complete your... Assignment. We came here for a reason. Sometimes, for conscious sake is the material, because that's how we live... On this planet, but... Your intuitions... What is telling you is different.
Yes, I feel stronger. Love is desired, help.
Assignment to... Do your assignment. Everything will come from the universe. Because they chose you for a reason. And that's the reason why you're here.
So who... I know I volunteered, but also I was chosen by...
You were chosen by the universe. The universe... Requested... Different planets, different people. What we call people Earth. We call them species on other planets, light, life form. On other planets, so many... Things to describe it because each one is their own creator.
Yes.
And their own planet. Some planets, we call them species, others we call them lights. Form of light, a source. So everyone decided to take a journey to this planet. Volunteer to come here. To fulfill their mission.
And so let's say when I'm here on Earth and I'm at the same time also on Akonaki. That's still... It's a...
It's still in the blood?
It's also, it's a parable, man?
Yes. Still have the...
So I can be here and there at the same time?
Yes. If you choose to.
So is this usually more difficult for someone who has never been here? And first time as a first timer on Earth? Usually it's more difficult for them to adapt?
Yes. You were giving a sign. And that sign was in you to... See your purpose.
The sign?
Yes, a sign. Intuitions. Was a sign of you to see the purpose of what you hear. Not your conscious.
Right. Yeah, this feeling that I have this urge to help, uh, never goes away.
Yes. You will... Travel... To your planet, see it again.
When I'm sleeping?
Yes.
So that planet is like a beacon. It's a sample of the mystery, love?
Yes. I call it the planet of hope. But in reality, it's a beacon of love. Everyone, it's unconditional love. No one can see what, from our planet, Earth, to that planet, it's... You will never understand the feeling, how it would be. So incredible.
Feel that love?
I do.
And absorb it?
I feel that.
Keep doing it. I still remember when I visited that planet on my psychedelic trip, I just, I cried for hours to hear that love. It never ends. It's just pouring out.
Yes, so great. It feels, it's just the light. It's just so much love. What we don't have here on this planet.
I wish I know a way to bring that love to Earth. Maybe I can learn, find a way.
It will come. The time will come. It will be here. You're gonna see it. You're gonna experience it from your body. You're gonna see it.
So I can just absorb that energy and send it back to Earth?
Yes. You will see and you will experience this energy of love. Everything around you will be loved. Even everything you touch will be loved. Including everything, nature, everything, everything.
I don't feel when I pass a tree or animal or children, I just keep telling them, "I love you."
Yes, you are spreading the love. You don't realize, but you are. Every little thing that you touch, that you say, "I love you," you're sending the love, unconditional love to that. Whether it's an animal, whether it's a plant, whether it's a tree, whether it's someone passing by, in your conscious, you tell them, you love them, they'll change.
Ah, they feel it?
Yes.
So that's one way I can spread the love?
Yes. You have the ability to do that.
Yes, I will keep doing that.
We all love this planet, but this planet unfortunately needs help.
Needs love?
Needs a lot of love. Your planet doesn't do that because your planet is full of that. It's full of love. We can't resist the emotions of your planet. This planet needs that from everyone. Everything that we touch, everything that we do is energy. And when you take that energy and you switch it to the love energy, the planet will grow.
So it's the nutrition?
Yes.
To the soul?
Yes.
Yes, and another?
So now they feel when you are threatening them.
So they cannot do anything with Akonaki?
No. It doesn't resemble. Oh my god.
Yeah?
Your planet is so beautiful. I just got this whole energy.
What energy?
It's so beautiful. It just shaped me completely.
What is the color of it?
It's a mixed color of, it's a color of like pink, bluish, white. It's a combination of those colors. It's like pinkish, bluish, white. It's like a mix of color of undescribable. That's how your planet is, the love, the energy.
And what is on it? I know it's translucent and besides lights, anything else you can see?
It's just, when I see, it's just pure white on the surface. Light has this hollow around of light in this planet.
What is?
It's just a shiny planet of light and everything around it is made with the same.
And so any other beings, they can come to this planet and absorb the love?
People can, but it's hard. They have to adapt to that energy of love.
Why do they need to adapt?
So much love. It's so much something that us on Earth could never find that. There are other planets that can sense... There are other planets that can sense, and other species, they can scent that love. That's why your planet is so special.
So, they do come to receive love?
Yes, they're the same kind, they receive the same. Others cannot, there are other species that cannot, because they don't have love. They're very evil species, they don't have that.
So, if they don't have that, they cannot be close?
They cannot resonate, just like the dark force cannot resonate to that planet. They only attack the weak.
So, how about the dark energy that we were talking about, so they don't like it?
No, they don't, they don't manifest that. Dark energy manifests from...
Fear.
Fear, weakness, that's how they manifest themselves. Even on the human beings, they manifest from that if they want to. Because that's how they are, they're this darkness, and it doesn't have a name, it's just what they are. They cannot manifest from other planets as well.
And is that the reason that I experienced when I was having the plant medicine ceremony? And I heard this group of energy, they were telling me that they are having a spiritual war with me?
Yes, because they don't like what you built, what you created. And what you're trying to do now, they fear there is a spiritual war. Just like the ones that's going on on this planet. That's the reason why, they discourage, they're trying to discourage you from doing what you... Exactly, you have the ability to change the world, change the people. Just like I told you, you created your planet the way you did, that's the reason why you were sent here.
Kind of what I'm supposed to do, like when I encounter those energies?
Those energies, you can easily block them with love, they fear that.
So, are you use love?
Yes, against them. Use love, because love is the most powerful source of energy that they don't like, so they fear that. Love is the energy that no one can penetrate.
No one can defeat?
No one can defeat, exactly.
So, in a way, this is, yes, what I want to do is tell them, "I love you anyway."
Yes, because you have that in you, you can't hold back what you have. Are you doing that, you're taking them away, because they can't, they don't survive in your environment. They don't survive, someone having those energy, they will try to discourage you in every shape and form. But they don't have the ability to change you.
I know I will not be changed, so my way is to love them?
Yes, just like you love everyone, you can't, you can't hold back what you have.
And then, love is the most powerful energy?
Yes, on Earth, we call it love or kumkara. On your planet, you created that, here, you gotta continue the legacy.
That's my mission.
There are others out there, ones their own mission, they're starseas, and they are created.
So, I can do this together?
Yes.
Including Miguel?
Yes, he has been doing it, he just fears at times, to see the reality that he's gonna be facing. He creates his own fear, his own luggage, but he's a special person, a special person. He's a person of love, of peace. He's a healer, he heals through love.
Through love?
Yes, that's why when he helps people, he does it out of the kindness of the heart, because it's love, that's his mission.
So, it's always about love?
Yes, but there's negative energy, negative entity, that sometimes tends to shift ourselves. But we just have to be on the moment, and switch it back again with love. We cannot let them win, as this planet will start shifting, because the Great Awakening is here. We are awakening our mind, our souls to people all over the world. It's raising their spiritual vibration, they see the love, how we do it, so they're following soon. They're following, because it's the only way.
Because evolution, what I understand is evolution is non-stop, is unstoppable?
Yes, we have to shift this planet to a different dimension. For so many years, this planet has been in this dimension. And now, we are seeing light on the other side. We will see how our conscious will be shifting. We just have to continue spreading the word to those that have not been awakened.
So, the change, the shift has just started?
Yes, we all start experiencing different things in our lives. Some people may wonder what is going on with them, but they don't know. We know, because we have a purpose here. We see that it's changing, we have the ability to help things to happen.
Bring love and light?
Yes.
And keep doing it?
Yes.
Doesn't matter?
No, we have, once we fulfill our mission here, we will see this planet taking a different course. And other planets throughout the galaxy, they'll see how this planet changed.
So, we hunger the beat?
Yes, we are, there's gonna be changes in the humanity. We just have to help those, we will change this planet. And we're accomplishing that, it started to shift as we speak, it's going slowly. It cannot be done so fast, because they will never understand why. They will never see what's going to happen. So, it's slowly, you see, it changes.
Slowly, but surely?
Yes, we've started to see it, we've started to feel it.
I wish you never feel it?
No, we can. There's an energy on this planet that's coming down. People don't see it, but I see it. This energy is coming from above, and it's hitting this planet, and I see it. The planet expanded.
Oh, so the planet can be expanded?
Expanded through energy, the form of energy. That's why your planet is so big compared to Earth.
And is this, the energy there is, basically is source energy?
Yes.
So, how I can create a planet like that?
Here?
Oh, no, at this Akonaki. What I, what did I do to create this planet?
Master, which is the universe, gave you... The tools to create it, and to make it your way. You chose to create a planet of light and love, because that's how it resembles. And the master gave you free will to create what you desire.
Who is the master?
The master is what we call God in our planet. Only the real ones that they see him, cannot see him, basically. He exists in different dimensions throughout the whole universe. He has his chosen ones to create, to make whatever... Universe he want. He is, other planets calling him master, all of the, us, we call it God. We always call it the source. Different planet call it differently, some deal benefits.
So, when someone is creating a planet, we have to get the permission, permission, the okay from the master?
Yes, he's the highest. He's the highest of all this universe, multiverse, and beyond. Talk about infinity can reach something that you cannot find. There is no end, there is a beginning, but no end. He can create the universe by sending his people, I'd say, but it's actually, it's a light of source. And the universe gets created, and planets gets created. So, there are so many planets beyond our galaxy, in galaxy within galaxy, and... So, the only problem that I see is just like this negative energy. That's what I see. But other than that... I, I see... That there is no manifestation to this at all, this is negative energy. Because only if we allow it, it will benefit. If we don't, it doesn't benefit.
So, it's still up to us?
Yes.
So, we don't need to be afraid?
There's no need to be afraid, what's coming changes, that's gonna take place on this planet.
So, does the source, the master, knows? So, the source knows those, he is aware of those energy?
Yes.
And I had this experience, I had a conversation with God, and I asked him, if we call him. I asked him, I said, "What do you do with those energy?" And this is what I remember, and he did not say anything. So, I asked again, I said, "Why you don't stop them?" And then, he doesn't not say anything. And so, I learned from his silence, his no answer. He's saying nothing, but this nothing means, "Why not? Why I should do anything?" Because his love is unconditional. So, he will allow all these children to have their experience. Do you know?
Yeah, he's not a, I know we call him him, but he doesn't, he's, he's just a light. He's just a source of light that controls the entire, I mean, this is endless. But he gives us the ability to choose what we want to. Wherever, where we want to go, what planet we want to be in. But he knows, he knows this, this evil thing out there. But that's why we ourselves, in planet Earth, we feel the negative energy. Because this, this energy exists throughout the universe, and it runs around. I say that, it runs around, it just goes around to create an effect. Which is what we call is cause and effect. If it hits something, it benefit from it, but if it's not, it doesn't. Depends how the planets are. Some planets are so different, this source of energy doesn't have... To go into it, it take over. They're too afraid of that, they're too afraid to encounter that. It doesn't manifest them, because they're gonna for them to grow, that bad energy is just used to manifest from other bad energy. And by going to different planets, it doesn't help them at all. They only attack the weak and vulnerable, and it's just a source of energy, negative energy. Just like we have our own planet, our own negative energy. There's a positive, there's a negative. So, you have to battle somewhere, you know? Our souls are made out of positive energy, but the ground that we touch is the negative.
The ground?
Yes, we have to connect with the ground, in order to stay aligned.
And so, the negative energy is not something sustainable, so they cannot, they will not last?
No, as long as we change, it doesn't last, because it doesn't manifest from that. It doesn't manifest from love, doesn't manifest from unconditional love, however you wanna put it. Doesn't manifest from the positive energy, moves away from that, because it doesn't have any benefit for them. But they're very capable of creating...
Things?
Things.
Or realities?
Or realities, yes.
So, so what we can do to not give them the right to do so?
By not giving them access, is not allowing them. When the time does come, you just gotta focus on the light, on the positive light, on the positive energy. Because they will not have access to that. They will go away when they see that positive light, energy. They can't manifest from that. They will try to control the mind, only if you allow it. Of love divine, you're, indeed, they're afraid you are going to keep on spreading the seed of love throughout the world, that's where you came from.
So, that means I really can?
They'll use whatever influence, another artificial intelligence world, so they could create and give you the illusion that they feel, to try to block you, from you to do that. They create this, in other words, they will shift into light, and to tell you that it's okay. But at the same time, they just, they're not being honest with you. They wanna make you feel that you don't have a purpose in this...
Right, that's exactly how I felt. They're very good at that.
Yes, that's how they manipulate, they have done it with you, and some other ones as well. Because that's how they wanna block from this thing happening on this planet.
Can they...
Doors, you should seek from your source.
From my source?
Yes.
Meaning?
Source of light, source of spirits, source of the universe, they are the source with you. You have to seek them, in the process, wherever you go, whatever you're trying to do.
Do you see my guides?
You'll have. You'll have them.
How many guides?
If I could count, like, I don't know, ten, fifteen, twenty, I don't know, so it's a big number of people. And I say people, but it aren't people, they guides.
You see anyone you know?
See a woman who actually holds a crown.
That's the Guanyin, right?
She holds this crown in her head. She's very powerful in her way. She's guiding you. There are other lights, that they guide you as well. You have to. Connect with them. I know it's hard to. Feel disconnected, but. Connect through prayers, connect through. Some sort of. Meditation. I want you to connect with Earth. Because Earth. Nature. It's one of the keys. Important to you. Some other words. When you go out and meditate, go out to somewhere and you can find yourself. Sitting. Down. On a tree. With nature, with rocks and connect. Because there is power.
From the, from the earth?
From the earth to you.
The earth consciousness?
Yes.
I do feel a connection with Earth? Can you see that?
Yes. There is a. Strong connection of energy. To you. But you haven't used that. That's one of your sources too. This planet has. A source of energy as well, not just. The energy that we see in ourselves. Through the light. Through the universe, but this planet has energy. This energy that we manifest from as well. We just don't. Do that.
We don't know how to?
As human being. But everything around us, it's a living organism. And it's. It was formed by energy, it was a form because it just happened. It's formed by energy. And we just sit down with a, on top of a rock and there's a tree and there's water and this, those are forms of energy. This was formed because of energy, it was formed, it's a living organism, how it's formed. You know, trees, the plants. Everything.
Rocks.
The rocks. You know? Ground, water, minerals. Everything came through the source. And it's a living. Organism that we see. We just don't know it because our consciousness is so. Naive in a way, we can't see things the other way.
So this is another way we can get energy from?
This is a source of energy we can get from. As well, it's connecting with. Our own. Connecting with our own mother, nature. Just like you connecting your planet through love. Divine love, which is the light, the source, how everything feels like so emotional. How you saw it in your planet, that's exactly the way you connect with Earth. Because you have to give this planet love. And connect with the planet. As we all are connecting. In order to shift this planet, we have to connect with the planet. We cannot just do it through our own subconscious and our frequency and our vibrations. But we have to. Love this planet. That's what love is about.
So the more we love this planet, the more we'll feel the love from the planet?
Yes, the more you start changing. And shifting, a lot of people. They don't appreciate this planet. You'd be surprised how many people would love to be on this planet from other. Star seas and other galaxies. And planets. Because they have, we have everything here, this planet, you just don't realize how much stuff we have. They don't have that. They're very limited. You know, but we have everything and we just don't know how to appreciate it and have love for this planet. Through the. Conscious mind of changing the universe. So it's a form. Of this, uh. Galactic Federation. What is known? Probably made up of some seventeen, eighteen, I don't know.
Right, that's what I heard.
But there's other ones, and there's another one, the. There's another. Federation, but it's not Galactic Federation, but it's another. That is form.
It's what?
There's another. For, form of, uh. We have. Another Federation, but it's, I don't know how to describe it. They work by themselves.
They work by themselves?
Yes, they're by themselves, they're all. They consider themselves independents, put it this way. They didn't wanna join the Galactic Federation. But. I guess their mission. It will be the same. They just wanna. Raise their planets and change things around. Look into. Their eyes, through their sources.
What is that? Do you see the name?
There is. Other people as well, there's other. There's other. I won't say. Entities that they are very. Evil. That they tied in together to this. To cause hardship to other planets in this world as well. And other planets or galaxies. There's other independent organizations, they work. They don't wanna join the Galactic. They're part of a world. But they wanna be independent. They. They wanna see. Themselves associated with anybody else, they just wanna be dumb.
And they are positive?
Yes. They're just independent.
Yes, Miguel and I have anything to do with that?
We. We met in another life in another time.
Yeah.
Just to fulfill missions.
Take, take a look and tell me what, what is that? What do we do?
We were another planet. Where there was war. They. Wanted to take us, to take the planet over.
Who?
This evil, uh, entity. That they. Decided to. Take over. This planet. We were sent there for a reason, to stop them from taking over this planet.
So we were sent there?
We were sent there.
What, what's the name of the planet?
Trying to see the name of this planet. I can't make the name.
See any letters?
I don't know, the stars had an R or something. I just can't. Read. Something I can't. See. I don't have good memories for this planet.
And where, is it far from our galaxy?
Yes.
Is this? The word. It doesn't, doesn't hang?
Another planet was. It's a red planet. Where we were. They attacked them by. Technology. Because they were defenseless. They wanted to take over.
What, what did we do?
We had to stop them.
How were you stopped them?
We had to destroy their technology that they have.
How, how do we do that?
Intercepting.
What?
Intercepting their. Ship. They were taking the source. They were connected to the planet. To try. To destroy it. Or changing it. The people on that planet were defenseless. Cause they're not warriors, they don't have the defenses. We were there.
Are we, are we there? Are we there with others?
Yes. There were other. There were others there from other planets defending the planet as well. We had to destroy. The technology that they embedded in that planet. They were trying to control the planet through this technology and they created. Our job was to intercept that technology so they don't have. The ability to control the entire planet. We were sent there.
What do we look like?
We're like warriors.
You listen?
We were. We had technologies ourselves. To defeat them. We had. Physical body was not. There, we were. Fighting this war.
Physical body?
Yes.
We had a physical body?
We didn't have a physical body that, in that planet. Neither the rest of them, we were wet. We were sent there.
Who, who, who sent us?
It was the Federation.
And how did we do?
We defeated them. The technology. To save that planet.
Is this a long time ago?
Yes, very.
Is there any other life that Miguel and I worked together?
I said, I wanted to recall. So they're not there to lose the fear. To open up. Once you do that, you'll see. What the message is.
And I want to work on that, um. So now I want Miguel to listen to my words. And I want to send you to a place that. Hold on one second. So now, I want Miguel to listen to my words. And I'm going to send you to a healing place. That is somewhere in the universe. And this is the place that Miguel's soul will resonate with. And so when Miguel gets there, he will be able to receive the healing today. And I'm going to count from one, two, three, on the count of three, you'll be there. And let me know where you are and who you are meeting with. So now, one, we're going to this place. And you feel very excited to be at this healing place. Two, now you're moving faster and faster to this place, you are gonna get there in no time. And three, now you are there, what do you see?
It's a temple.
Uh huh, very good.
Things are written on the wall.
There's no wall. What do you, what is in this temple?
Light.
And you know, this is a healing light. And this light will help you to reduce your fear and to release your protection. So you'll be able to not do more and see what this light can. And is, this light is doing anything for you?
Yes, shining on me. It's vibrating.
It's vibrating. And feel what this vibration can do for your energy, your fear, your protection. Feel the changes. If you can visualize anything. To release this protection, you don't need any longer. You will become more courageous and fearless. Because you are a warrior. Do you feel the light is doing its work?
Yes.
Where do you feel this energy is working on?
Yes.
You feel in your heart?
Feel my head goes down.
Which part that you feel is changing?
My heart.
Your heart?
Yes.
It's more open?
Yes.
Let it open even more? That you have nothing to be fearful, that you are ready for an even bigger mission. There's nothing can stop you from what you need to do to serve your purpose. And you are ready, you feel your heart is wide open?
Yes.
Very good. And, and the white energy is still there?
Yes.
Communicate with this energy, find out if it's complete, if this transformation is complete.
Yes.
Very good, very good. And don't forget to show your gratitude, to thank, thank them.
Yes.
Alright, so now, I want Miguel to listen to my words. And it's time for us to come back to this reality, to this place, this time. And I'm going to count from one to five. On the count of five, you'll be back feeling wonderful. One, we are coming back slowly and peacefully. With all the, the memories, all the experience. And they will integrate into Miguel's life. For him to have more clarity, to understand more of his. for him to have more clarity, to understand more of his purpose, his mission. Two, and those experiences will make Miguel to be able to do more because he has no fear and is ready for his mission for what he came here for. And he knows, and he can feel it. Three, now you are started hearing the sounds inside of this room and outside of the room. Four, you are coming back very nicely, very nicely. And five, feeling wonderful all over. How do you feel?
Okay, I feel like I'm still body. Can I move my body?
You feel the energy?
Yeah.
Do you remember? Not much. Not much?
I remember something.
Do you know what time is it now?
Not really. All right.
It's like ten thirty.
Oh my God. Ten thirty at night? Oh my God.
I did like five hours.
Oh my goodness, I couldn't feel. It seemed like that long. Wow.